Aloha, everyone. We are convening our Committee on Transportation for our 10:30 a.m. agenda on Tuesday, March 12, 2024. We're gonna get right into it. We're gonna open up with SB 2443 relating to highway safety. This deal is with Automated Speed Enforcement Systems Program.
Thank you, Chair. SB 2443, Senate Draft Two, First Director Ed Sniffen of Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair members. Ed Sniffen with Hawaii DOT in support of this measure. With this program, we ran our red light camera enforcement program that's coming out really good right now. We wanted to make sure we expanded on this automated enforcement to ensure that we can keep our roads safer throughout. A couple of things that I would like to ask. In the bill right now, it's limited to 10 intersections. I would love for that number to be removed, so we have discretion on where we can put these devices to make sure we can maximize safety on the system. If we cannot remove the restriction of 10, then I would love to say 10 new intersections, because we already have red light cameras in different areas that we could potentially use for speed camera enforcement in those areas. I would also like to ask for, in our testimony, or in the bill, we had asked for an additional FTE. We don't need that position, so that can be eliminated. We asked for another, for this one, we asked for... Yeah, oh, sorry. And this one was also restricted to extended sections. Would love to have this be expanded into not only school intersections, but also work zones. Those are the two things that we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Up next, Department of Attorney, the Attorney General's Office Deputy Attorney General, Denise Wong. Denise Wong, sorry.
Good morning, Chair Todd, Vice Chair Keela, and Committee members. My name is Denise Wong, Deputy Attorney General. We have submitted written testimony providing comments, but I can just, in summation, this bill seeks to impose liability on the registered owner of the motor vehicle for violation of the speed limit. Specifically, the bill authorizes use of the Automated Speed Enforcement System and the enforcement of HRS Section 291-102. However, this statute requires the driver of the motor vehicle to comply with the speed limit. So we recommend certain references to HRS Section 291(c)102 be replaced with references to the new section set forth in the bill in Section 4 on page 12. I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. Louis Oliver, Department of Budget and Finance, providing comments. Ben Lowenthal, Office of Public Defender in opposition. Up next is Major Tanaka from Honolulu Police Department in support via Zoom. Oh, morning.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, and community members. The HPD stands in support of this bill. My name is Michael Campbell. I'm the acting captain for the Traffic Division. Major Stacey Tanaka apologizes for not being here today, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there folks who have submitted testimony and support? Seven in support, two in opposition, three providing comments. Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to testify on SB 2443, Senate Draft Two? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions? Requiring the agent's office.
In the bill language, it holds the owner of the vehicle strictly liable for speed compliance. Is there any problems with that if the owner is not the one driving the vehicle at the time of the violation?
At this time, I'm not able to answer that question, but
Okay.
we can provide response to you.
Okay, okay.
Members, anything additional?
Can I have a follow-up, Attorney General? So our red light camera program, right, have you guys experienced any kickback from owners in regards to their liability? Because that's the same situation, right? It may not be the driver of the vehicle violating the traffic light.
I'm not aware of such responses, but I can...
But it would be a similar situation.
Yes.
Correct? Can I have a follow-up for DOT?
Yeah, go ahead.
Director? So, yeah, I was wondering why there was a 10 school area limit in the bill. I mean, it didn't make sense to me. So you're asking that we eliminate that so you have more flexibility?
That's correct.
What about the funding necessary?
The funding, we would still be using special funds, so we can come up with another number. If we can expand beyond the 10, we'll come up with another number that we'd put towards this program. I mean, it's a big, important one for us. The speeding is the biggest cause of fatalities on the system right now that we'd love to get rid of.
Yeah, and so you said that the current red light cameras are able to also monitor speed?
That's correct.
Have you guys been doing that?
We've been monitoring speed just to know what the speeds are through that area after we had put the red light cameras in. We have not been enforcing, because that's not allowed.
Right, right. But do you see as the light turns yellow that guys are like trying to zip through the...
Yes, and we've also seen that since the red light cams went in, speeds through those intersections had gone down. So it's a good thing that's happening right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Anything additional? Seeing none, we're gonna move to the next item on our agenda. The next bill is SB 3183, SD2. This has to do with the Road Usage Charge Program and expanding it to the counties.
Thank you, Chair. SB 3183, SD2, First Department of Transportation, Director Ed Sniffen.
Chair, Vice Chair, members. Ed Sniffen standing in support.
Thank you, Director. Up next, we have Hawaii State Energy Office in support. Thank you. Michael Munikata, Ulupono Initiative in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Michael Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. Just standing on our testimony in support. We do have some minor amendments in our testimony, just trying to add to our multimodal mission in some of the sections identified in this measure. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you so much. Oahu Metropolitan Organization in support. Office of Public Defender in opposition. Director Morton of City and County Department of Transportation Services in support. Steve Parsons, Kauai Climate Action Coalition, small business owner of Kauai EVs in opposition. And several other individuals who have stated support in opposition. Seeing no further registered testifiers for SB 2443.
SB 3183. No, no, no. It's on YouTube. It's official now.
Seeing no other registered testifiers for SB 3183, SD2. Is there anyone online or a person that would like to testify?
Vice Chair Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We did submit testimony and will stand on it. Would be available for questions.
I apologize, Tom. Thank you so much. Seeing any other testifiers in the room or online?
Okay, members, do you have any questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is SB 3022, SD2 relating to transportation. This has to do with a new transportation network company fee, which would go towards the Safe Routes Program. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. SB 3022, Senate Draft Two, Department of Transportation, Director Ed Sniffen.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Ed Sniffen standing in support with comments.
Thank you, Director. Up next, Hawaii State Energy Office. Thank you, Department of Taxation Director Sugunuma. Thank you. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We do want to express some concern that the that the fee so-called being imposed by this bill does not have nexus to the Safe Routes to School Program Fund, so we think it's more, we would classify it as a tax. And we are concerned that the, that as such, the statute that this is being codified to, 279G, is not within the Department of Taxation's jurisdiction. So we think that some changes are warranted. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Up next, Bob Toyofuku, Uber Technologies.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the committee, I am Bob Toyofuku, and I represent Uber Technologies. And Uber is opposed to this bill, and I want to make it clear, we're not opposed to the Safe Routes to Schools Program. Why we are opposed to the bill is that it's not equitable. The fee is only to be charged to transportation network companies, which is primarily Uber, Lyft, and Holo-Holo. And maybe Charlie's Taxi also has a TNC, but I'm not sure. And the point I was trying to make in my written testimony is that, excuse me, if the committee decides to pass it forward, then all of the transportation organizations that transport individuals within the state should be included as responsible to pay in this fee. The other thing that I did some research, and I could not find enough information, but the Safe Routes to Schools Program is funded by speeding tickets, et cetera, that goes into the state. But primarily, it's being funded by the federal government, and the federal government gives money to the DOT that then transfers it to the counties. And the most recent, just for your information, the most recent information I have, and I haven't done enough research, is that in 2020, about 940,000 was given to the counties for this program. But primarily, I don't think it's equitable, and that's why Uber is opposed. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toyofuku. Up next, Michael Munikata, Ulupono Initiative.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee. Michael Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. I think there's been a lot of great legislation that's come through this body and through this committee. Really appreciating your folks' support for the Safe Routes to School measures that have moved forward both last session and obviously years before that. What we find is the need for safe infrastructure remains a top priority for our communities. We have over a billion dollars in unmet needs across our communities when it comes to looking at our pedestrian accessways and our bikeways. I think what we're trying to do is create safer communities for our keiki and our kapuna to really traverse and not have to worry about running into so much congestion or traffic. It's been proven through various studies that, actually, excuse me, a recent comprehensive study in 2021 showed that more than 44 cities concluded that ride sharing in urban areas result in at least a 1% increase in traffic, and congestion has increased by four and a half percent. Now, I'm not saying that that's a substantial number, but it is definitely a correlation between ride sharing companies and congestions within our communities. There's also something called deadheading, which is where ride sharing services log many miles driving in which there is no passenger actually within the vehicle. At least, you know, trying to pass some time before their next pickup, for example. This creates more traffic in our communities, so if we can kind of find that there's a correlation between some of this, you know, with TNCs or ride sharing companies, and the need to provide for our safe access of our various, you know, keiki and kapuna in our communities, I think that that's where this bill is coming from. So we're very much so in support of this. The need is there. This is a dedicated fund to help meet much of our community needs here. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Munikata. Up next, Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice, Abby Saitz.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Abby Saitz. I'm the Transportation Equity Director with Hawaii Appleseed. We are standing in strong support of this bill, and many of our points are the same as Ulupono's, so I'll keep it short. But we just want to emphasize the point that ride sharing platforms have been found to increase traffic congestion, emissions, and collisions. And although these companies make, you know, millions in profits from our roadways, they are impeding our ability to advance some of our very important climate, energy, and safety goals for our state. We believe this bill is the right step forward in requiring companies who profit from our roadways to contribute more to the safety issues that they are exacerbating. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saitz. Seeing no other registered testifiers, seven folks in support, one in opposition, three providing comments. Anyone online or in person that would like to testify on SB 3022, SD2? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, members, do you have any questions? Rafonishi?
For DOT? Director, so in the bill, there are three sources of funds for the Safe Routes to School Program, but does it also include federal funding?
No, so there's two Safe Routes to School Programs. There's one federally funded program that comes through the DOT and that we administer funds to the counties or nonprofits, and there's a state Safe Routes to School Program. I think it's funded by, as Bob was saying, tickets and the like. And that one used to be under the DOT, but was turned over to the legislature to distribute accordingly. So that's, I believe, that's the fund that would benefit from this fee.
Do you know how those funds are distributed?
I don't. Since it was turned over from the DOT to the legislature, I'm not sure.
Okay, if, I may have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
With Ulupono?
Morning, Representative.
Good morning. You talked about the increased usage of ride sharing vehicles. Do you have any idea what is the percentage of local residents that use it?
We do not have that number, Chair, or Representative. We do not.
So the assumption is that most of this is tourists?
Again, that data, we might be able to go check and take a look at, but in general, I mean, it is a combination of both residents and tourists that are utilizing these services, we do believe.
So, for example, local residents might be giving up their vehicles because of these easier-to-use, less expensive on their household... less expensive on their household budget by using ride sharing versus owning a car and having to pay for parking and vehicle registration, et cetera.
It could be the case. Could be the case.
But we would be upping the cost for them.
Correct. I think what this bill's looking at is adding a nominal fee to a ride that already is sort of established in our various apps when we pull up apps. I think what we looked at, and again, this isn't our bill, but we definitely supportive of it. But when we looked up, for example, catching Uber or a TNC, for example, in different states, there's fees that are attached to those most places. Currently in Hawaii, I think the only fee that's attached to it is when you take it from the airport, a surcharge from the airport. So I think that there's different ways that municipalities, states have looked at how to tap into that, to really create a more safe environment for folks to traverse within communities. I think this is just one tool that might be able to, you might be able to utilize that money to help with some of the safety issues. To speak a little bit, if I may, Representative, to speak a little bit about the Safe Routes to School Fund. It's under scrutiny right now. I believe that the Senate bill that's coming over, looking at some of the funds to help with the costs of Maui, it's actually pulling one point eight million dollars out of that fund, so that there's going to be a zero in that fund in particular. So there is going to be no state funding to support that if that bill does move forward. So this is just another tool to add some of the infrastructure costs that we so desperately need in our communities.
So do you know how that fund is being used currently?
I think that it is somewhat in limbo. When things did happen during COVID, where the fund got moved from DOT to the legislature, I think there is some fix that might be needed. I believe the bill last year tried to fix it. So it is kind of looking into it and seeing how we can make, ensure that that doesn't stay unspent. Counties need this. Counties need these funds. They're desperate for these funds. There's projects everywhere. Like I said, there's already a billion dollars in high-priority projects that are identified for both pedestrian or bike access across our entire state. County Safe Routes to School coordinators could utilize that money to really work with the community and find different projects that could help, whether it's building sidewalks, more bike access, whether it be bike lanes, or just creating a safer environment for us to be able to walk and roll in our communities.
So the Safe Routes to School Program is a county program?
It's a state program that exists within Department of Transportation, and there's county representation across the state.
Okay.
It's kind of like you have a little bit more local knowledge when you're within a certain island to really help make sure that some of this funding does go towards.
Yeah, I think in conversations we had last year, one of the issues is that it's primarily a state mechanism, but almost all of the roads around schools are county. So I think it's kind of like trying to find a balance there, but maybe not quite successfully yet.
Well, I think DOT does a great job of working with the counties to really put a lot of these projects into place. So although they are county words, DOT does do a lot of great work in our counties.
So the county has a Safe Routes to School Program to work in their jurisdiction on projects?
To work with the Department of Transportation to get the funding and to deliver it within the community.
Okay, so the money is not just transferred to the county?
They have to, I believe they have to apply for it.
Directly?
Yeah, maybe.
If you could clarify?
On the federal side, the program that we still have, counties and nonprofits can apply for Safe Routes to School funding. The difficulty on the federal side is you got to follow federal requirements, and there is restrictions to funding. Percentages can be used for education, and other percentage can be used for pilots, and other percentages can be used for operations. So there's quite a bit of strings that are necessary when you apply for those funds. Which is why the state funds have always been more popular for counties and nonprofits. There's less requirements to them, a lot easier to deploy. So, and in general, when the DOT ran the program, we ran it in general the same. You still apply for the funding, you get selected based on the priorities in your areas, and the funds are sent out to you on reimbursement perspective, from a reimbursement perspective. That's how it was run before. But again, since the legislature took it over, I don't know how the funds are being enacted right now.
So how much do we have in federal funds?
I believe every year we get about six hundred thousand. But that, the funding mechanism that we had in the past was safety lu, I'm sorry, fast. And those Safe Routes to School Program funds were eliminated when we went into the new bill or the IIJA. Now, bill identifies Safe Routes to School Program, but it doesn't fund it. So in general, in the future, the federal funds that went towards Safe Routes to School will go away. There's not going to be anymore, unless Congress decides to fund it again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, anything additional? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is SB three two four two, SD one relating transportation. This has to do with county, or actually, just departmental jurisdiction over high-risk corridors.
Thank you, Chair. SB three two four two, SD one. Up first, Department of Transportation Director Sniffin.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair members. Ed Sniffin stands in support.
Thank you, Director. There are about four folks who have provided testimony in support. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on SB three two four two, SD one. Is there anyone online or a person that would like to provide testimony on the measure? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to SB two three five zero relating to noise pollution. Pretty self-explanatory, just noisy mufflers on public highways and high-density areas. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Chair. SB two three five zero, SD two. Up first, Department of Transportation Director Sniffin.
Chair, Vice Chair members. Ed Sniffin stands in support.
Thank you, Director. Up next, Honolulu Police Department in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Major James Slater of Honolulu Police Department. I'd like to stand by our written testimony in support with amendments of Senate Bill twenty-three fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I have Mark Harpenow, an individual in support.
Hello, thank you. Yes, Mark Harpenow here. I live in Waikiki. I've lived here for about fifteen years, and I know you, some of you live in Waikiki or in dense populated areas. It's just insane. It's getting worse and worse. I've been to several Waikiki neighborhood board meetings. It's always brought up and discussed. But I've been here fifteen years, and believe me, it's definitely getting worse each year. I think it's just gotten popular to have, to make loud noise, for some reason. Some of these cars have like fireworks that come out of their tailpipe. It's like bang, pop, bang, bang, going down the street. And then they come back down the street again about five minutes later. And it's just hard to believe that we allow this kind of stuff. It really stresses people out. I also have a small Maltese dog, and the dog just panics for about a half hour when they hear fireworks like that, loud bangs. I mean, there's a lot of people that have pets that have dogs that have the same issue. And then these mopeds. I have a moped myself, and I went and got it safety inspected just recently. And I asked the guy, how do these mopeds get safety inspected when they're making so much noise? And he says, oh, they just take the muffler off. They put the stock muffler on when they come in and get it inspected, and then they go home and they take off the muffler or put another muffler on it. So safety inspections really doesn't help prevent this kind of ridiculous noise. So I think everybody here has experienced this, but just try to imagine having to go through this, not just during the daytime, but at night. It's when the bars close, some of these motorcycles at the, with Kelly O'Neil's bar on lures. When these guys leave at three in the morning, four in the morning, they rev their engines. When they get to a stoplight, they rev their engines again. It's like and it's just maddening. It wakes you up. I've called the police department a couple of times, and then you just get angry. And so it's so hard to get back to sleep. There's a lot of people in our building that complain about it also. And some of these people are doctors and nurses and construction workers. They work in hotels. And it just really causes a disruption when you try, when you've got to go to work and you got to have all your faculties together. Please do something. Don't let this slide this time. We just got this narrowly passed, I hear, through the Senate. So I hope you all do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harpenow. Members, there's probably, you've all got emails, and there are about forty people who have supported testimony and support, twenty folks who have supported, I mean, provided testimony in opposition. And at this time, is there anyone online or in person that would like to provide testimony on SB two three five zero, SD two? Seeing none, Chair.
Okay, members, do you have any questions?
A question, Chair.
Uh, Kila and then Rep. Nishigami?
Uh, DOT. So Ed, I know we've made strides, I think, on this bill. Because I don't want to take away from the problems in the urban core of Honolulu. I just don't want, frankly, the more urban, I mean, sorry, the more rural areas on Oahu to take a hit on this. Because, I mean, to some extent, when you're traversing these roads late at night, you need sound to get safely somewhere, because if I don't hear the motorcycle or I don't hear a moped, I actually may not see the car. And as you know, sometimes these vehicles aren't maintained properly, and so noise is the only way to alert people that they're there. Is the, would you say as of now, we're making more of an attempt to keep it in this area?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think from a safety check perspective, it's getting more and more difficult for people to take off their mufflers and put it back on again. So we're catching more that way. On the DOT side, because the legislature allowed us the bill to move forward on noise cams last year, we're going to see a lot more enforcement from that perspective on the system. And again, we're just enforcing to the state's laws.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Rep. Nishigami?
Uh, for Director. So enforcement of this law, then now you're banking on the noise cams?
For DOT, yes. I'll tell you, the police are amazing partners, but they're pulled in so many different directions. I used to say, in part of my spiel to the public about traffic safety, that more people die on the highway than in any violent crimes you may see in the community, all put together. But recent news is showing that that's not necessarily the case. So there's areas that we want to make sure that police can be in while we're still enforcing on our side, which is why we're looking for those enforcements from cameras and the like.
Okay, thank you. If I could ask Honolulu Police Department?
Yes, sir.
My concern over this bill is enforcement. So how would Honolulu Police Department determine enforcement of this bill? Because your ability to be able to stop a vehicle that's suspected of having an altered muffler was taken out of the bill.
Right, so the inspection part, I was a little bit confusing because it almost seemed like we would be violating people's Fourth Amendment rights or search and seizure by forcing an inspection, whereas really, it's an observation on the part of the officer that's approaching the vehicle. Obviously, the officer who heard the obnoxiously loud or the overly loud exhaust system making a loud noise, we would use that as part of our probable cause to stop the vehicle. Obviously, we would have the ability to say that, yes, that was the vehicle in question based on the other vehicles in traffic. We deal with this already with Section two ninety-one, twenty-four point five, which is loud muffler. There's already a law in place. And that's why one of the amendments we actually suggested was just moving this high density and maybe stricter fines into that language of the law, only because the section that we have now, it does work. And we can apply it, and it's basically just observation on our part.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Rep. Kirigao?
Or DOT Director. This is sort of a follow-up to Rep. Kila's question. In the bill, it says that high-density area is defined as a county having a population of five hundred thousand or more. So that means this bill applies to all of Oahu, not just urban Honolulu, right? Just, I just, because he had mentioned, okay. So the enforcement would happen regardless if you live in the urban core or if you live in more rural, like, country sort of areas?
Based on the bill, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, anything else? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. We have SB two six three zero relating to pedestrians. This has to do with essentially legalizing what is currently known as jaywalking under certain circumstances.
Thank you, Chair. Up first, you have Director Sniffin, Department of Transportation, in opposition.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair members. Ed Sniffin stands in opposition.
Thank you, Director. Up next, we have Department of Health in providing comments. Thank you. Up next, Honolulu Police Department in opposition.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, many members of Honolulu Police Department stands in opposition.
Thank you. Up next, we have Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice, Abby Saitz in support.
I'll have Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. I'm here once again to stand in strong support of this bill on behalf of my organization, and we also offer some suggested amendments. Our organization recently did a report on this issue, and we found that we give a staggeringly high amount of jaywalking citations in Hawaii. It's available in here if any folks are interested. We found between 2018 and 2023, on average during those years, we gave over five thousand jaywalking tickets per year. And per capita, when you're looking at per one hundred thousand people, that means we give about three hundred and fifty jaywalking tickets per one hundred thousand people in Hawaii, while other places like Washington State, Jacksonville, Sacramento, New York, and almost every other places, place that has studied this gives more in the line between five and fifteen tickets per one hundred thousand people. Our heavy-handed enforcement has not prevented our growing pedestrian, or prevented our growing pedestrian fatalities. But unfortunately, jaywalking enforcement has been found to increase hostility towards pedestrian. Nationally, has been found to lead to overpolicing of people of color, as well as also provides financial burdens to the folks who receive the tickets as well as a burdens on our judicial system. I'd also like to take some time to address some of the misconceptions around this effort. The main one being that this bill would provide some sort of negative safety impact. Jaywalking laws were never actually about safety. They were an outcome of lobbying by, on behalf of the auto industry to prevent regulations on vehicles and to sell more cars. America is very unique in its jaywalking laws. And globally, the cities that are safest for pedestrians, jaywalking laws do not exist. It is also telling that the states and localities in the United States that over the recent years, the preliminary data from those places show that there's no changes in pedestrian fatalities or collisions. So in a time when, you know, vehicles that are multi-thousand pounds are commonplace here in our society, it seems unjust that we would penalize pedestrians for just how they choose to move about communities. And even more, impose higher fines for breaking certain traffic violations, such as speeding. So in short, we'd like to see a shift away from this focus on, our focus on roadway safety efforts that really emphasizes enforcing pedestrians and redirect those resources towards a more holistic approach that centers building safe, accessible pedestrian infrastructure, which is, you know, the proven way to keep both pedestrians and drivers and all roadways users safe. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Abby. Up next, Hawaii Public Health Institute, Peggy. No? Okay. All right, seeing no further registered testifiers on SB two six three zero, SD one. Is there anyone online or in person that would like to provide testimony on the measure? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions, comments? I mean, not comments, questions.
No comments. I have a question for Honolulu Police Department.
Morning, sir. Standing by.
Hi, good morning. Yeah, the data in Hawaii Appleseed's testimony regarding the number of jaywalking citations in Hawaii compared to other places is kind of staggering. So I was wondering if you could explain maybe why Hawaii seems like maybe an outlier for our jaywalking citations?
Sure, I'd love to. Based on our statistics, in two thousand and twenty-three, people that were crossing outside of the crosswalk, we issued seven hundred and three citations. In two thousand and twenty-two, we issued one thousand four hundred and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty-two, we issued one thousand four hundred and nineteen. Two thousand and twenty-one, sir, we issued two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine citations. So based on those three years of statistics, we see there is concern for people that are crossing outside of crosswalks. Now, we've submitted testimony in opposition of this bill, mainly because we're interested in protecting pedestrians. Our infrastructure has crosswalks. What motorists don't expect is when a pedestrian darts out in front of them, because they feel it's reasonably safe to do so, and they end up getting hit. Not only does that cause a problem for the motorists, but it causes problems for our insurance companies, causes problems with the healthcare, health care of the person that was struck, and these costs increase. Our infrastructure is set up for people to cross safely within the crosswalks. Motorists are not expecting pedestrians to cross outside of crosswalks. A good example would be for a pedestrian to cross in between two parked vehicles because they feel it's safe to do so. But the motorist traveling down that roadway is expecting that pedestrian across a designated area. So you see the HPD's concern. I think we share the concerns with the Department of Transportation. Last year alone, we had several fatalities as a result of people crossing outside of crosswalks. Now, whether they felt that this was safe for them to do, I don't know. But they were struck, then they were killed because they were outside of designated areas for crossing. So that is a concern for the HPD.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How much discretion do you folks use when issuing a citation?
Discretion is based off of the officer at the needs of the community, at the needs of the mission of the day, at the needs of the violator. So officers do use discretion, but if there's community concerns relating to jaywalking and there's community complaints, we're going to weigh those community concerns over the jaywalker and the needs of, you know, hey, there's people that have been hit at this intersection or on this stretch of highway, and that's caused an undue burden on the community because that individual decided to cross outside the designated area. So basically, the concern lies, the discretion lies with the officer and the officer's command and the needs of the community.
And is, right now, if somebody crosses when there's a, you know, on a designated crosswalk, but the red hand signal's up, is that considered jaywalking?
No, that's considered crossing against the red palm, and that's a separate section altogether.
Oh, but it could be, you could get a citation for that?
Yes, sir, you can receive a citation for that. And the important thing to remember, and I share the sentiments of the DOT, we have a countdown. And that countdown assists motorists and pedestrians alike. And that countdown lets the pedestrian know, this is how much time, if you're already in said crosswalk, for you to get to the other side. So it's very important, once you see the person up there that is safe to cross, and then it goes into a countdown, and then it goes into a flashing red hand. And basically, these are all clues or measures that the DOT has come up with and that says, hey, you got this much time to cross, it's safe. Now the countdown has started, if you're in the crosswalk, you might want to consider hurrying up. And then when that red palm is, you should not enter the crosswalk because the light's about to change. So we do that not only to save a pedestrian from being hit, but we also do that to help facilitate traffic movement. And I think we all share the same, you know, similar experiences where we are just trying to get from point A to point B. We're observing the traffic laws, and we have, we have a community member that just decides they're going to cross the road. And when that happens, that slows down traffic. That potentially causes a risk to that pedestrian. Not only does it cause a risk to the pedestrian, but the people that, when we slam on our brakes behind us to help avoid hitting this pedestrian, now that backup happens, and everybody behind us is likely to get in an accident because of this one individual that decided it was safe for them to cross the street at the time. That's what we're really getting after, and these are the things that we need to have the conversation about. And really, if this law passes, that's a major concern.
And I agree with what you just said, right? If somebody's darting out in front of traffic, that is causing an issue. But from my read of the bill, you would still be able to cite somebody for that type of thing who walked out in front of traffic and caused a slowdown, right?
Yes, we could, but the concern lies with what is, what is reasonable going through this individual's head in comparison to you, sir, or myself, when trying to apply the law? And that's the language of this bill that is concerning is because what a reasonable person would believe is safe to cross the street at that time. And if that person were to challenge the ticket or, you know, go to court over it, how would we rule that? What's reasonable in your head may not be reasonable in this gentleman's head or my head, when all we're trying to do as a police department, as community safekeepers, is keep pedestrians safe and get motorists to where they need to be. So we have these designated tools in our community to help facilitate this movement of pedestrians and motor vehicles alike.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I appreciate your responses, and I could comment, and then it'll turn into a question, but I just walked to the bank, I saw six people, and I was happy to count because I knew this was on our agenda, jaywalking. And I'll admit, including myself at one point, I crossed when there's a red signal because there was no cars coming, and I clearly knew I was safe. And it seems like it happens all the time. And I'm pretty sure everybody here has probably jaywalked at some point. And so how do we, I guess, do you have suggested language? I mean, I can see, given the impacts that you're saying, it's causing a slowdown, that should be something that we should enforce. You trying to read somebody's mind on whether they knew that they were safe, I can understand how that's problematic. Is there a way to get to the outcome where if somebody is causing a result, say, causing a slowdown, that's a citable offense, yet people still have the flexibility to make their own decisions on whether it's safe to cross or not? Is there some alternative language here that could work? Or would you folks be opposed to anything that allows more flexibility?
I think, and based on the studies of this law and looking at, I've been doing this for twenty-three years as a police officer, and I've had my share of patrol days, and I think anytime that you make it subjective for an individual to cross, and once you have that subjectivity, it makes it very challenging to enforce the law. We can go back to discretion of the officer, and I think that, I think that officers use their discretion when applying this law in particular, and they will look at the totality of the circumstances, meaning that if, if I were out there on the road today as a patrol officer, and, you know, out of the six people you saw jaywalk, I would weigh what is traffic conditions at the time? Are we talking mid-morning, when everybody's in a hurry to get to work? Are we talking lunch break as time, you know, and things like that? Any officer does weigh, I think it's safe to say that officers do weigh the totality of the circumstances in response to the violation.
Yeah.
And basically, the way the language is written today is you're making it very subjective based on what the offender is doing, what they feel is safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chair. AG, I know you're not testifying, but HPD is there. Um, AG, is there a way that if this measure is to move out, can you folks provide comments to the committee? Is that possible, Chair? The position of AG. Thank you. HPD, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Two things. Are you folks more concerned about the shift of ideology, the legalization of jaywalking just then transforms the perception of legalization for folks traversing the sidewalks?
I think...
Because when it comes to discretion, right, are you just concerned that? Okay, opening the question.
Okay.
I'm looking at Chinatown, easier place to jaywalk, to be completely honest.
Of course.
But then you look in Nanakuli, Maili, where I almost have five lanes of traffic, jaywalking poorly lit roads may then almost make it ten times more dangerous.
Exactly, sir. And as statistics showed, I used to work the west side for six, seven years, and unfortunately, areas like that are prone to pedestrian fatalities.
So is that what you're saying, like, the discretion is more concerning of those areas that don't have the proper?
Of course.
Makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, members, anything additional? Rep. Police?
Yeah, if DOT could please, I mean, not DOT, Department of Health. Thank you for being here and your testimony. So citing your testimony, you talked about how there are other places in the world, in the US and the world, which have different laws in regards to jaywalking and reasonably low mortality rate.
Yes.
So what do you attribute that to?
Thank you, Representative Wonishi, and I really appreciate that question. So I think Appleseed had actually referred to that. So jaywalking is not illegal in Germany. And in Germany, someplace like Germany, there's a lot of prioritization provided for the pedestrian and the bicyclist, along with then public transit. And so given that, yeah, you might be fined, five-year-olds, if you cross a red hand, but you can jaywalk, because there are a lot of roadways where the pedestrian and the bicyclist are also prioritized along with the vehicles. And so jaywalking, as had been mentioned, and I was just Googling it myself, was invented in Kansas. It's a term, J means silly, silly person. So a jaywalker is a silly person. So we've already then stereotyped a bunch of us who have jaywalked. So there is kind of a, there is a labeling that happens. But in Europe, it's, it's basically how you prioritize who gets to use the road and how we use the road. And so in the US, the automakers have had really the prioritization as an industry in terms of prioritizing the landscape for cars.
So you think it's a, like, a government-related issue on how we address, how, you know, how we prioritize, you know, fines and tickets, et cetera? I mean...
Representative Wonishi, your question is really very deep. So I think, yes, it does matter in terms of government and how we prioritize our built environment and the infrastructure that we build around it. So who comes first? Is it the car and the vehicles that are the private vehicles, or is it the person moving from place to place? And so you're right. And so in Europe, there are roundabouts. In the US, we don't seem to like roundabouts because we, as private vehicle drivers, think it'll slow us down. But if we had roundabouts, there would actually be less exposure for the pedestrian, right? Because it's not like a five-lane road that you'd be crossing, but maybe just one lane. And so there's definitely less exposure for the pedestrian. So you're right. It is kind of a matter of how government, we prioritize how we build our infrastructure and who comes first.
Well, we have heard a lot of bills this session, and we'll probably continue to hear, a lot of bills that are prioritizing alternative means of transportation. And, you know, we're not looking that much at differences in laws and enforcement, right? I was just talking about how bicycles and scooters are being used on sidewalks, and there's little enforcement of that. And I'm surprised to see so much enforcement on jaywalking. So thank you for that. And by the way, Hawaii DOT is very supportive of roundabouts, so I gotta give...
Yes, we appreciate it.
Director, a thumbs up on that.
Yes, thank you. As somebody who lives on the windward side, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, one more question for Honolulu Police Department.
You got your quota.
I know, I'm pushing my limit here. I saved my questions of all session for...
The one bill.
Yeah.
Okay, sir, I'm ready.
So I, recognizing what Vice Chair Kila said, and recognizing the incredible danger of, say, sprinting across the highway in Nanakuli, and recognizing the need to protect that from happening, and I think you said that part of the intent here is to stop that from happening in these more dangerous corridors. Appleseed's report showed that the majority of jaywalking tickets, or at least a large portion, were in downtown Honolulu and Chinatown. And this, to me, seems like a reasonably safe environment when you have two or three lane, often one-way streets, and often periods of relatively minimal traffic. This, to me, seems like a place, relatively safe environment, to use discretion. So I guess, how do you just, one, is that true that these are, that, say, downtown and Chinatown are hotspots? And then how would you sort of explain why so many tickets are given there rather than these places where I think we do need to prevent it, like Nanakuli?
Okay, there's many parts to your question, sir, and I respect Appleseed's, you know, testimony. I think it's important to note that in quarters such as downtown Chinatown and the business districts within Chinatown around Honolulu, it's important to note that the amount of traffic signals in that area, the amount of crosswalks in that area, is very important. The amount of pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic is just as important. So the way the infrastructure is set up today, it's arguably, you know, geared towards moving vehicles safely and consistently. Pedestrians should use crosswalks. The amount of jaywalking citations that have come out of that area within the three years, I can't give you an answer. I don't have those numbers in front of me of specifically where in Chinatown or where in the business districts that this occurred. I have noticed, over the last twenty-three years, the DOT has made crosswalks easier to use, and that's six-way, meaning not just your standard four-way, but they're also using the X in the center for people to cross. And I think it's the, I believe that is helping things significantly, but our major concern with HPD is to get people to where they need to go safely, expeditiously, and without causing harm to either party, the vehicle or for the person. So that's our testimony, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Members, anything additional? If not, the last item on our agenda, which should receive significantly less attention, is relating to traffic safety, basically requiring cars to pull over after driving slow and his car is backed up. It's definitely a Big Island special. Okay, SB two eight one nine.
Thank you, Chair. SB two eight one nine, up first, Director Sniffen, Department of Transportation, in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members, Ed Sniffen stands in support.
Thank you, Director. And other, there was one individual in testimony providing opposition. Seeing no other registered testifiers on SB two eight one nine. SB one, is there anyone online or in person that would like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions on this? Okay, if not, we're going to roll right into decision-making on this agenda. We're going to open up with SB two four four three relating highway safety. This is the Automated Speed Enforcement System bill. We have a bunch of amendments, so please bear with me. Mostly technical in nature, I think there's a lot of discrepancies between Senate and House and how we draft things, so some of it's just cleaning things up. Okay, First Amendment would be to strike Section one, removing language pertaining to a governor's message that we don't believe exists. The next one is to strike Section eight relating to general fund appropriations. We're gonna amend, what we're gonna do is we're gonna remove the ten school zone number. We will put in a requirement that we include at least one of these implemented on each county, but we will remove that ten as a figure, and also include language that would expand this to work zones. We will know in the committee report and probably the need to define more clearly what a school or a work zone is, though. In addition to that, amend language, there's some conflicting language around May... We're gonna blank out the FTE position on page 21, line 17, change the effective date to July 1, 3000, which just reflects our House internal policies. Also include language in the committee report regarding the intent of the bill, basically require the state to implement this. We're gonna put basically like a soft date of one month prior to the '25, '26 DOE school year. I don't know. It felt fun, yeah. I don't know, it felt fun at the time. We're also, additional notes in the committee report for the next committee to maybe clarify the interaction between new and existing sections of traffic law, because I do think that was brought up in testimony, maybe the need for more clarity around that, as well as some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, do you have any questions? I know there's a lot. Okay. If not, Vice Chair for the vote on SB 2443?
Thank you, Chair. SB 2443, SD2, noting the amendment proposed by Chair Todd. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Ebslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Vonishy?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item is SB 3183 relating to the road usage charge program. Chair's recommendations to move this forward, we would, there's something, there's some conflicting language. We will have this pertain exclusively to electric vehicles for the time being. It's something that could be taken up in a future committee. In addition, we're gonna provide some clarifying language that you won't have an opt-in for both the county and the state, basically one opt-in for both fees, because otherwise that could be a little confusing. Remove the unnecessary motor vehicle definition, as it's already defined in HRS. We'll blank appropriations out. After talking to our House attorneys, I think there's a, I think that some of the DOT suggested amendments are a little bit complex, and I think we're gonna push that to future committees to let them deal with some of those specific requests, as well as changing the defective date to July 1, 3000, and including some technical amendments as well. Members, any questions? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3183, SD2, with your proposed amendments, noting the presence of all members in the committee, is there any members wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item is SB 3022 relating to transportation. This is the transportation network company fee. I generally agree that the legislature isn't here to pick winners and that any fee like this should be assessed in a more equitable fashion. So we will be including limousines and taxi services as part of this proposed fee. We'll change the effective date to July 1, 3000, including technical amendments, and noting the committee report, the need to clarify tax versus fee, and specifically look at the tax foundation's testimony and some of their concerns about kind of departmental jurisdiction and the need for clarity on that. Just on a personal note, you know, I think part of the complication right now is if you rent a car, you are paying a flat fee. But a lot of user or customer choices have shifted over time. You know, when I travel to a big city on the mainland, I almost never rent a car. I'm almost always using public transportation or Ubering around. So there may be a need to capture some of that revenue. But I do kind of generally agree that it's not specifically like a safe routes, direct nexus, but we'll leave that for future committees to determine. Members, any questions?
A quick comment, Chair. Thank you for making those proposed amendments, and I agree with everything that you said is in the sense of equity, that all folks who participate in this line of business should be subject to the same. So thank you.
Anything additional? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3022, SD2, with Chair's proposed amendments, noting the presence of all members, is there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair. Your measure is adopted.
Thank you. SB 3242 relating to transportation. This deals with the jurisdiction over dangerous corridors. We're gonna amend references of each department and specify that it's the Department of Transportation. Change the effective date to July 1, 3000, and include some necessary technical amendments. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3242, SD1, with your proposed amendments, noting the presence of all members, is there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair. Your measure is adopted.
Thank you. SB 3242 relating to transportation. This deals with the jurisdiction over dangerous corridors. We're gonna amend references of each department and specify that it's the Department of Transportation. Change the effective date to July 1, 3000, and include some necessary technical amendments. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3242, SD1, with your proposed amendments, noting the presence of all members here for the vote, are there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next is SB 2350 relating to noise pollution. The Chair's recommendation is to defer decision-making until, we'll probably place it at the beginning of Thursday's agenda, because we are gonna have an additional hearing for Committee on Transportation. But the intent would be to move it forward, we just have to include some clarifying language specifically around what a high-density area is and kind of figure some things out. Next, we move on to SB 2630 relating to pedestrians, commonly known as the jaywalking bill. The plan is to defer decision-making to Thursday's agenda. I will say that the Chair's intent is to move this forward, but provide, I think, some much-needed clarifying language around, to make this a more objective standard, specifically including language basically saying, if you are at any point impeding the flow of traffic, forcing a car to slow down or come to a complete stop, that it would still be an infraction. I do think we need a more objective standard than using kind of like reasonable judgment and immediate danger, because I think immediate danger is a moving target. But that is the intent for decision-making on Thursday. Last on the agenda, we have SB 2819 relating to traffic safety. Chair's recommendation is to amend the bill. You would only be required to pull over in these specific circumstances if you are going 10 miles per hour or less or more under the current posted speed limit. I think this is probably designed specifically for the saddle road, if I'm being honest, but there are times on the saddle road where it is very foggy and not safe to pull over. So we're gonna have some notes in the committee report to maybe provide further clarifying language in the Judiciary Committee so that this doesn't create unsafe situations as a legal requirement. We're also gonna change the effective date to July 1, 3000 and insert some technical amendments. Members, any questions? We're gonna leave it. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. SB 2819, SD1, noting the technical amendments proposed, are there any, sorry, noting the presence of all members on the proposed technical amendments, are there any members wishing to vote no with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Okay. And thank you, we are adjourned.[1769.78]